I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, at 7:00 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing for Barbara and Seth Van Estendelf, 2023-03 is the case number, for 83 Island Road. The date of the application is January 26th. The following was advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette and posted in the municipal center. The here, the... It reads, "The town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center resource room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. To hear the following application. Barbara and Seth Van Estendelf are requesting a special permit in an RA zoned district pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3, Section 3.4.5, non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures. To request the relief of lot area and road frontage requirements to build a single-family structure located at 83 Island Road, Assessors Map 174, Parcel 2. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposed application should appear at the time and place designated." Is there a representative?
You're online.
Okay. The applicant, you're online with us? Correct?
Good evening. I have, this, this is Jack Kemper, Kemper Associates Architects in Farmington, Connecticut.
Okay.
And Barbara Van Estendelf is here, and Jason Clark from DeBreed Engineering is here.
Okay.
We are looking to build a house, a new house, on where the Van Estendelfs have a cabin now. I think you guys all have the plans.
We do.
And I can have Jason put the site plan and the plans on the screen if that would be helpful.
I believe we all have a copy of it if you want to walk us through it.
Okay. I think I may have Jason start with the site, and then, then we'll talk about the house. Because I think this is mostly about the site.
Okay. All right, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening. Jason Clark with DeBreed Engineering, with offices in Oxbridge, Massachusetts, and Cranston area. We have a existing parcel located off of what's known as Island Road, private driveway. It has no public frontage. There's an existing cottage on the property with a, with two additional accessory structures. Proposal is to raise the existing cottage and one of the sheds and replace it with a new post home. We have approval for a new septic system on the property, and we've received approval from Conservation Commission for the work that's proposed within the jurisdictional We are also, in addition to proposing a septic system in the house, we're proposing a new driveway and a well. The existing property currently does not have a well. As was noted in the advertisement, the lot does not have, part of it done a public driveway, and it's also an undersized lot based on the current zoning. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward with the site plan and the proposed application. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has, or we can move on to presentation by Jack.
Does any, board members have any questions further?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, Jack, the floor is yours.
Yes. What we are looking to do is to build a new house, designed for sort of a couple generations of a family, first floor living. The house is approximately 3,000 square feet. We are looking to break up the design into several pieces so it doesn't look too, too large or massive. So you can see by the plans that it's several different pieces. There's the garage, then the main house, and then the bedroom wing. And they, we've shifted them back and forward to respect the Conservation Commission's wishes, so we've gone back and forth with them. We have, we're looking to add a two-car garage to the house. It's a Cape-style house. Other than that, I think that's, you know, we're happy to answer any questions, but I think it's, it's a nice house designed to fit this lot.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Jack, you said that you were looking to add an additional two-car garage, or what's on the plan?
No, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, there is a two-car garage, that's part of it. No.
Yep, okay.
The two-car garage that's there is there.
Okay.
On the plans.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else?
Kind of mimics what's around the area and what we've done in the past regarding Washington, so. See if it probably sits back a little bit further than the old house I was there, of course. What I wish they had done, made the plan bigger.
Oh.
Because it's like, I got a...
Yeah, can you read it?
Yeah.
He had a bunch of full-size plans, by the way.
Yeah, well, you know, what I got...
He's just teasing you, Jack.
Just teasing you, that's all. I had to look through, oh, I got new ones.
Well, we can put it on the screen.
No, no, I, I got it, no problem, but it just took me a little while. The regular light works very good, so.
I get it, and I, I'm of the age where I need the plans really big.
So, John, you just said you was going to...
Yes, I did. Yes, he did. Actually, I don't know too much about it. Is, is it too much about it? I did the site check, that was there. They got it pretty much pegged where the house is going to be, and of course, the property line, so. And again, maybe the rest of the houses, that it's even not even 100, that guy's down the road. He's got three sides of water.
Yeah. Okay. Any other board members?
The biggest thing I saw with this is there wasn't any frontage. That's a right-of-way, a cross, right-of-way.
Excuse me, what did you say?
There's no frontage. Their frontage that they perceived to have is in the middle of a right-of-way.
On the road?
Lot of private road.
Yeah, I know, I know, they hear you well.
And they're all yelling.
Yeah.
Okay. If not, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this? I also want to mention that we do have correspondence from staff, and the abuttes were all notified by certified mail, and they were all, we're all set with that.
We did get a letter from one of the abuttes.
Yes. Actually, that's what I was looking for.
You still have to join in.
Yeah, I know I have it. And just for the record, there was a correspondence with Mr. Ralph Aldrich, who said that he and his wife have no problems with the proposed home and so forth. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
You need to close the public hearing first.
All right, close the public hearing.
Okay, we, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Forget, seconded by Mr. Vombarra, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Hinni?
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Vombarra, aye.
Okay. Public hearing's now closed. You have another motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this plan as presented.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Forget to approve the plan as presented. It was seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. Any further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Hinni?
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
That's good.
Vombarra, aye.
Okay. So the special permit request is approved unanimously, and we will get the decision drafted and get it to, to you as quickly as possible.
Terrific. We really appreciate you guys all looking at it.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anything, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
You already read the legal notice on the next one, correct?
I did, yeah. The next case, Case 2023-02, I am going to recuse myself from hearing and turn this over to Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Need a couple more minutes, 7:15?
Yeah, one sec, sit down.
Thanks for catching that, Jim.
Nice to go, Jim.
We just have to wait another couple minutes until 7:15 if the schedule...
These are the possible...
You can set that up. This will give you, yep, that'd be fine. Yeah. You have plenty of time to set up. You have two to three minutes. How you doing, Jimmy?
How are you doing?
Good.
It's nice in here, I haven't been here in a long time.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Yeah, to visit.
Stay out of here, it's always good. How's Margaret?
Pretty good, how are you doing?
Good, thanks. We're honored to be visiting the lot. Henry Lane's even here tonight. We got everybody here today. We have a continued public hearing for Philip and Donna Michelson, Case Number 2023-02, 212 West Street. It's for our variance. I guess I'll turn it over to the representative.
Good evening. For the record, Margaret Bayton, Civil Site Engineering. I'm here representing Philip Michelson regarding a piece of property he owns at 212 West Street in Douglas. Just to get your bearings, West Street right here, and here's Whiten's Reservoir. So he owns a, an existing 3.9-acre parcel. What he would like to do, he currently lives right here in this house, what he would like to do is subdivide this parcel and build another house for himself next door. Unfortunately, he only has 3.97 acres, and so he's asking for relief from the, the area needed. Instead of the 90,000 square feet, he's asking for this lot here to be 83,000 square feet. We came before the board back in 2016 with the exact same plan. His intent back then was to, to build another house for himself, but because of health issues and COVID, things got delayed, and then this has expired. So he, he's back again to, to ask for a relief for the, the area requirements. He meets all other dimensional requirements, just the area.
And it was approved back...
It was approved, correct. And one of the, the issues with this is, is on his deed, it calls for five acres, and so he, he thought he had five acres at the time, but in reality, he's only got 3.97. And we've been, back out there, we've surveyed, surveyed it twice.
I remember this.
I remember this one.
Yeah, this is pretty subtle. It's original, when he bought the place, it was four acres, with a little bit.
But, yeah, but...
It turned out this year, I mean, time, '16, when he redid it, found out he didn't have four acres.
That's correct.
So, yeah. And I remember approving this, too, so I don't, I won't take any issue to involve.
So other than area, we meet all the other criteria, frontage and setbacks and...
Correct.
Anybody have anything on the board?
No.
Ronnie?
No.
John, you already spoke?
Yes, I did. I'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
What?
He's gonna, he's gonna make a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna second, that's all right. We have a motion by John to close the public hearing, seconded by Ronnie Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A roll call vote?
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Vombarra, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the, was it special?
Well, what we didn't do, since we closed the public hearing, we didn't ask if anybody in the audience had anything to say. You kind of rushed me into that.
I'm sorry. Anybody hear about this hearing? Answer it.
Is anybody opposed to it? So I got a save on that one.
Look at them all, and I knew where they wouldn't belong.
I thought you did it.
So anyway, it's 2023-02 is the number. The variance.
You making a vote?
Yes, I do.
A second vote? Yeah. Motion made to, as presented.
Yes.
Motion made by John Bavera, seconded by Jim Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote?
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Vombarra, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. And I will get you back for that, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Margaret.
Yeah, thank you.
It was short.
No. I like them.
There you go, let's end. Make sure I don't pick any of his shit up. Let you just mix it all up on us. That's it.
So much, I guess we gotta wait a few minutes.
Twenty-five minutes, you say?
Yep.
Plenty of time on common.
There's a invoice here, if you want to check it out, sign it.
Do I miss anything, Eric? You know, the funny thing about vice of the hero, people take about two hours and it'll be perfect. If you try to be, like, I just, from my own personal experience, going two hours a day, I will spill one piece, and I put on a, I'll have paint all over. I did the bathroom, sorry, this was Sunday. We've had difficult times with the walls in like three years. And she said, "What are you doing?" I said, "Is it by the paint?" I don't care what color you go, just by the paint. So she brought the paint, so I did the woodwork on it twice, the walls twice, cut the edges twice.
Is this something new that we put the time?
Yeah.
Yeah. For a while, for a while, we were doing them all at the same time, but then some people, if they had a longer, would have to sit in the audience for 45 minutes to an hour. I could talk to Jim, try to get him 10 minutes apart, because, you know, somehow it's 30.
Now we're gonna be until 7:45 anyway.
The only one I can read on here is Ron. Even though we can't do it.
Well, you know what? Buy him some stamps, will you?
He's a professional. He's a Jew.
Well, I was trying to get in line. You read my little Ben in that second, I don't know who the second got. He's supposed to be a school teacher, looks more like a doctor.
I tell you, I signed so many checks, I don't have my...
No way. You don't... We got a committee of doctors here? Jeez, Ron, you really are the only one.
Come on, it's John, you can't read that. Hey, at least we can do correct...
I'm watching your school. But everything I write is print.
The corners, because I...
I do everything in all... My white paint was all... My, my head, factor in my hand, so it just gets all...
I could see that when you take the pictures.
2025.
He's so much funnier.
Let me get away, is it my phone? It's a Merrill Lynch thing now, so it's all wood finish, so you had a sand...
She does 50 to one. I did not.
And 27.
Get in the truck. Get in the truck.
It's this one.
You gonna start breaking bottom now, so?
I think I can get it.
Oh, yeah, on the title? My coach, he'll lie for it.
Sorry, he's being...
He says, "Yeah, but you..."
It's like, that's all I do, is just build.
We pull it, Dodge.
In the back, so...
What is it, a 170?
No, it's a Ranger.
Oh, really?
Yeah, a cabin after Ranger. Ranger, Ranger. They're not as small as a kid.
No, they're not, no, they're not, they're bigger.
What's it doing? They got now...
Collars on the wall for another hundred. One of them is called a Maverick, I'm sure they do. You know, they were, the guys were...
No, it's...
It's a truck. It's like my professional, so she wipes out all the insides, wash, cleans the inside.
Maybe because I bought it from a computer, but I didn't...
You go, "Shh, don't get the best paint."
You look at the American...
It's like a million...
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, I think, obviously, per seeing, it's like, it's got to go on, it's like, it's on the way upstairs, it's always... Johnny, when you got the leather coat, just let it go. Well, he's not gonna, he's gonna paint it, I'm like, just, he's old enough, he's over it. Give me a word. She goes on for...
It's a truck, I think it's bigger than a Ranger. Interesting.
School order it, I'm the Brooklyn Fire Chief, ordered it. It's not the end right now.
This is well over... It could have been tomorrow, and then they got another truck out.
Every once in a while. It was bullshit, right? It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be... Things I see that would near and distance, and the heads, it's pretty, it's the certificate. It's 50 and 51. Remember the guy that dressed up like a girl? He has a nipple, he has three or four pictures of people that took of him with his jokes. That's awesome. So, we have, everything a little bit like a box and stuff, a little bit, all of it. One of them, which I think is hilarious, is like, just a lot of... She used that thing so much, she was just discovering.
A gallon, April 1st. No, it's... That funny dude. And so, I think, you know, like, and my buddy...
Do you know what I mean? But after that generation, it's... But, yeah, like, so we don't visit. My kids, they'll go to our school.
How many seats are on the plane?
The truth is, nothing happened.
No, of course not, just me and my son.
Is that in the keys?
It's about 45 minutes out of...
It's crazy. When I went down last October, they were practicing. It's always a nice sight.
When they had the airshow up here, in Flairia, we left, two hours...
The guys that were planning it, plus, there was 20 of us that used to go down to Quonset Point, and, boy, that was, that was really something. I mean, the golf course goes right around two sides of the airport. So, it's good, loud.
Oh, yeah. How are we doing, Jim?
We're, we're competing here with...
Wait a minute, you got his number, or you got...
No, I can see what he's doing, he's watching his time, and I'm watching.
Okay, the next agenda item is public hearing for Pollard Pension Plan and Trust, Case Number 2023-04, 48 Glen Street. The date of the application was February 6th. The following was, was published in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette and also posted at the municipal center, and reads as follows. "The town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:30 on Wednesday, March 1st, in the Douglas Municipal Center resource room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. To hear the following application." Pollard Pension Plan and Trust is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 10, and Section 9.2 of the Douglas Bylaws to request relief of road frontage requirement, Appendix B, to build a single-family home in a VR zone district. But because of the proximity to the Water Resource District, the dimensional requirements of the VR zone district must be met. The property is located at 48 Glenn Street, MAP 197, parcel 1.1. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. And we do have a communication from our staff that the certified mail was sent out and received back. And hearing tonight's case would be Mr. Palmer, Mr. Forget, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Bombara, and myself. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am here on behalf of the official. Since those of you who have long memories will recall that it was a variance that was a property decade or two ago. And for a host of reasons, which I'm not sure I understand myself, for some reason, variance was never exercised. So there was some work done on the site. There was a bridge built across the wetland area. And I guess it's the position of the town's plan or that we don't actually need to get the variance renewed, but we want to be cautious. Because obviously if you start building a house on it, find out that the owner's spectrum was wrong, you get, you get in trouble. So in order to make sure that we don't run into troubles down the road, we would rather not rely on 20-year-old variance so that we have some certainty that nothing would work to torture us. So we essentially have a 12-acre parcel plan that we've located by the three lots, but we're five and 5.23 feet short of having the frontage required for the third lot, which on the plain is the middle lot. The two outside lots both have the full 200-foot frontage. The middle lot is 194.77 or something like that. Essentially five and a half feet short of what's required. And there are obviously other alternatives to developing this property. You could put a short roadway in there and get your, get your lots. But as you can see from the plan, there's extensive wetlands in the area, which would make creating a such small cul-de-sac subdivision very difficult and would result in significant impacts on wetlands that you can easily avoid by giving us a five and a half foot area of frontage. So it's our request basically that, you know, the location, the topography in the wetland area creates sort of a hardship with respect to developing an actual short cul-de-sac subdivision there. So we're basically asking the board to grant us the release of the lot, thus dividing the lot into four lots with the areas of five and a half feet of frontage in the little lot. As I said, there's already a bridge. There's a common driveway that serves all three lots. And there's a bridge that's already put in that was recently renewed by the town officials and the Conservation Commission. They're happy to settle the bridge. So oddly enough, we also have a special permit to allow the common driveway. That has not expired because the bridge was built, but we did build the house. It's a odd situation, but we're basically asking the board to reissue the variance that was originally granted in 2003.
Yeah. All right. Are any board members that have any questions?
No, not really. We've done with this, something like this before in 2018 and 19. I think it was, so same scenario.
Anybody else? Anybody in the room that would like to comment on this application? Okay. That's the case. I'm certainly entertain a motion. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Hinni.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Patrick Aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Would you like to make a motion on this case?
I'd like to make a motion on number 2023-04 to accept the. Help me out here.
To grant the variance?
To grant the variance necessary.
As submitted.
As submitted.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Bombara. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Dan Hinni.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Patrick Aye.
Bombara, aye.
Okay, so the variance is granted. We'll get it drafted and get it to the town clerk as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Good night.
You gotta wait again. Eight minutes.
I know.
Guys have been extraordinary expeditions today.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think I have it.
That's one way.
That depends who shows up.
Water's cold.
Heat, too.
Yeah.
Guys gotta do 10-minute intervals.
I know.
I was thinking like five.
Five-minute intervals.
Then some cases take 45 minutes.
Yeah.
People's waiting.
Can't you do it like court? Just tell everyone to be there for seven and you get to them, you get to them.
Yeah. As long as you're not the last one.
Yeah. You have to be here for that time. Everybody else should have to be here, too. So when those people zoomed in, do you have a Zoom presence, too? Like, you could watch this from? But could you, could you go on the computer and get in if you wanted to ask questions?
Yes.
Yeah. There's a Zoom link on the.
But it's advertised.
But on your, do you see them someplace or they just pop up?
All the meetings have a link on the.
The one who's first.
YouTube is in my heart if you want to watch.
Bet you that.
Like Gilligan's Island comes out every week.
You just got a phone call. We had to shut it down because it was.
It wasn't ringing, was it?
No, it was.
Jim didn't put any pictures in there.
Don't worry. I would never.
I should have never left it with him.
He's the one that went, whoop, John.
Oh, yeah. Okay, what did I get?
Nothing. But you just never know.
Nesting snake. So we had a huge notice on yesterday. And everything in town was closed. And everything in X, Y, Z. What's wrong with this one? It's unbelievable. The bags were closed. There was no place for breakfast. I mean, I was up at 5:00, I hit my driveway, sent my wife to work because one of us had a car accident. Right. So then I said, you know what? We'll get breakfast. So I do it downtown. Nothing's open. I ended up with. And then I went down and got a fridge and it closed in the summer.
Hey, you know what we can do? We can do minutes.
Yeah, actually, I was looking for my coffee.
You can have mine.
I can write down the dates.
I read these already.
Yeah, I wrote them too. I got it right here, John. Okay.
Actually, I have an idea.
Right here.
Oh, maybe make it out there. Good.
You gonna make so?
I don't know. Yeah. This should be these nights.
We can review the.
Did you go on?
Minutes are February 1st meeting.
What'd you send from LA?
We'll do whatever we want, you know? We'll find out. The sidewalk, well.
Did it?
I think so.
Many sure what?
No, it's cold. Two members and then the agent.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
I'm not sure.
February 1st meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara to approve the February 1st minutes as written, seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Dan Hinni.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Patrick Aye.
Bombara, aye.
The minutes are approved. Just a couple minutes left, yeah.
So it's no, gives us a day of work or something. It's like a day of people getting rid of this and all, ready to go, but.
This isn't your busy time.
No, it's been actually nice, better because of the weather, but not busy by any stretch. Yeah, decent, getting stuff done.
This really.
We seem to always cut with, you know, put our pants down somewhere, but.
Not gonna cry.
So it'll probably rain a lot in the spring. Yeah, so we'll have to struggle. But we were able to screen in December, which we normally can't, so. So that was good. Yeah, we made a big stock. I don't know, give and take everywhere, right? Happy about that. Probably be upset a few months, whatever. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, no, that's the little.
We make some money, sure.
We went both ways.
Joke. Almost true.
We watched. Both ways with no. Get it all in.
Complete opposite. No, I.
I grew up down in the village of Greenwich. I went to a significant Greenwich hole. Forgot what they call it. Monitors to get to walk at the front of the line going home. I got to wear one of those, those ribbons like cocks. Station giving me a taser or something. Get back to Georgia.
What are we doing on your? Another minute?
One minute.
Yeah, Steve Ray, good guy. He's been my neighbor. Got divorced and everybody was fucking with me. Was my neighbor. He lived like through the fence, like, and does a great job. I might, I want to think I get a little dump jail on my own person. Really? Can't just grab a dump truck? Give you a job, will you? Little sex woman.
Oh, yeah. That's all set.
Good, it's a way to go.
Next time on set.
Yeah.
You have a stand-up.
He sells to you and it'd be registered and he could use it.
Okay, the next agenda item is a public hearing for McIntyre Materials, Inc., case number 2023-05, 118 Davis Street. The date of the application was February 8th, 2023. The following was advertised in the Telegram and Gazette and posted in the town hall and reads as follows. The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 7:45 PM on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application. The public hearing for McIntyre Materials, Inc. has filed for a special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3, Appendix A, Section C.1, retail establishment for sale of merchandise in an industrial zone district for the, for the addition of retail components to the wholesale construction and landscape materials operation allowed by right. The property is located at 118 Davis Street, assesses MAP 191, parcel 2. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. The applicant, would you like to join us?
Yeah, John Palmer, Altim, McIntyre Materials, also Jim to see over here. He's the landowner. I don't know if I'd like to go. I didn't watch through the application.
Yeah, if you would, please, just for the people that are watching, absolutely watching.
So.
What job to see?
I'll try and stand up first. So McIntyre Materials has a formal place of business at 470 Northeast Main Street. Same property that's tied to that big development, the cubes that's going on. During the whole process of that site, they need to put an access road in from Northeast Main all the way through over to Blackie Dam or.
Gilbert.
And it was supposed to be done during the winter. They decided in December that they weren't going to do that. So kind of, they stopped scrambling at that moment to find a temporary house for, location for McIntyre Materials, because they're going to start ripping right through there in the spring. And we obviously can't cohabitate that spot. So that's where this all came about. So I reached out to Jim about his location at 118 Davis Street. I knew that it had previously done basically everything that we're going to do. The area, it's an industrial zone. We, we distribute, we wholesale, all that. What we have at Northeast Main Street in addition to those is we have a, you know, permit down for retail sales to homeowners. Very small portion of our business, but we have it and it's a full gamut. So obviously that's why we're here tonight to add that to this location for temporary use. To go through this, McIntyre Material currently operates at that location where we distribute stock by wholesale materials to contractors, which, you know, the uses by rights in the zoning bylaws, wholesale and distribution costs significantly bulk of our sales. The retail sales portion of everything we do, and it's, you know, homeowners showing up for the one yachts or whatever, it's less than 3%, more than 2%, somewhere in there. So it's, it's not insignificant, it's just a small number. Everything means something to us, but, and certainly the bubble of those customers that show up for Douglas residents. So, you know, we don't want to shut them up by any stretch. Anyways, a lot of this top section goes through what I just laid out as far as the warehouse really interfering with our plan to open up there this spring. So the special permit you saw at 118 Davis Street, McIntyre Materials would be engaging in stock line materials, distributing materials to customers by delivery in our trucks and wholesaling to local landscapers and contractors to bring in their own vehicles to pick up materials. These uses are all by right and in industrial zone. Appendix A dot T dot two, sorry. A small portion of our business in that 2% to 3% range is for homeowners picking up material. The use for that is not allowed by rights, but is allowed by, granted special permit by the Board of Appeals. The hours of operation for McIntyre Materials retail sales would be from 7:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and 7:00 to 3:00 on Saturday. All likelihood, it'd be a little bit less than that, it would be 7:00 to 4:00 most 7:00 to 4:00 mostly Monday through Friday, and 7:00 to noon on Saturday. We asked for the 3 o'clock thing because a busy weekend, it might go longer than noon, but we all like our weekends too, so we're looking to get out there. You know, the site will be staffed with one employee who'll handle the sales and the loading. You know, if during seasonal peak times, there would be a separate person to handle the loading that employee would handle the retail sales. It would stay very much the same as it is right now, as we're doing in Northeast Main, just it would be located at 118 Davis Street temporarily. The applicability of the special use permit, Section 3.1.3 of the Douglas ZVA, Zone Bylaws Reference Table 8, Schedule of Use Regulations, provides that retailers that sell merchandise to the general public in industrial zones may be allowed by special permit by the ZVA. Section 9.3.2 establishes the particular use, but zoning board in review of those use. Traffic flow and safety would truly be no different than it is currently. Social, economic, or community needs such will be served by this proposal. Like I said, a lot of Douglas residents do use it, a lot of Douglas landscapers pick up there, or local landscapers, not just Douglas, but, and they, you know, they do a lot of the work in the community. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, it's not going to impact any anything more than it already does, it's very minimal. You know, there's a trailer on site that we plan on using it, and there's a portable restroom as well, but, you know, there's really no need for anything other than that. The neighborhood character and social structures, it fits aesthetically and compatible with the area. There are two warehouses already adjacent to this property, or garage on one side and building on the other. And this building, like I said, it's been here for years. Similar use for many years, I'm not sure how many, but Jim could speak to that in a minute. Impacts on natural environment. The retail use portion of what we're here for is incidental to the uses as permitted by right. So they will not cause any adverse impacts on the natural environment. Potential fizzle impact. The use will not adversely impact any town services as described above. And like I said, if we staffed with one employee, he's already works for us. At this other location, he'll just move over here for temporary use. And when, say temporary, we fully expect to be able to go back to Northeast Main Street for this time next year. So we're expecting to be the full season. And then when we close down in whatever the weather allows, December or January, whatever it is, we'll take that time to move back to our current location, assuming the roadwork is done and we can safely operate there. We have requested a waiver. The one waiver we requested was we're supposed to present you with a plan. Given that everything that we're already doing is allowed by right, we're only asking for the retail sales portion to be, you know, added to that. We didn't think it constituted the plan. We respectfully hope that you feel the same way. In conclusion, the proposed special permit is sought to allow applicant to temporarily relocate its current operation, which in turn is effectively necessary to ensure safe operation of McIntyre Materials business during the warehouse construction. The retail use is incidental to McIntyre Materials' main business of wholesaling and distributing materials, but the retail use is consistent with such by right uses, and consistent with the neighboring properties and businesses. And importantly, the retail sale of bulk materials like this ones in industrial zones. We suggest that the beneficial impacts of the sound of this use significantly outweighs any adverse effects of the proposed use. Therefore, we respectfully request this board to approve and issue a special permit for retail sales in industrial zone. Jim, would you like to add anything?
The only thing, Jim Tassino, the only thing I would add is we've been doing the same operation there since the mid 90s. You know, McIntyre Materials is employer in town. When we do projects at churches or for civic organizations, Boy Scouts, or the gazebo, or things like that, we always partner with, you know, McIntyre. We go to McIntyre, they donate our stuff, we go to Dolphine East. So they're a community advocate, they help us out with a lot of things. It is only temporarily going to occupy the space. We did have retail sales there as far back as 95. I think that it's grandfathered on the property. Me and Ken have a little difference of opinion, so we're only talking about the retail sales aspect of it now. We sold stuff there, we sold everything there but Christmas trees. Ken's opinion, and he's here, I'll try to paraphrase him, but he said it had to be continuous sales. So I paid $2,750 for a spancy legal opinion that says that's not really the case, that if you did it once and you paid the property tax up to date through that whole time, that that would follow along with the property. I don't know if that's true. It didn't seem true that you had to do it every day when you said it to me. He said you had to do it every day, and that didn't make sense because retail operations would stop some days, might not have product to sell, do you know what I mean? So that didn't make sense, so I paid for the legal opinion. And what he said, I'll be honest with you, that don't really make sense to me. Because he says if you did it one time and you paid the taxes, that would stay with the property. I don't necessarily agree with that either. But I think you're inclined to give him what he's looking for, it's only temporarily. He's going to move off of that property for this time next year. We are going to develop that property next year, so we will have, you know, plans and stuff that we're going to develop over this time, that he's using the property for what our next steps are going to be on that property. I hate to see him leave town. I know that, you know, his other site, I don't know if you've been down there, his other site, you know, they're working on bringing it up. It's just a lot of work before they're ready to occupy that site. So, you know, temporarily is sort of the key word to me, but it's only the retail sales component of it, which he says is 2% of his business, but I would argue that leads to more business for him. Do you know what I mean? I would think in my mind that if, you know, somebody goes in there and buys a truckload of bark mulch, and then, you know, they'll buy their septic stand from him, maybe, do you know what I mean? Like, he sells it short, I think, when he says to 100% sales. And I'll answer any questions if you have any questions.
Any board members have any questions for McIntyre or Tassino?
No.
Okay. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this application?
Does that mean you have somebody in the window there?
Is there a name on there?
You do, this is a person.
Evan Pedro.
So anybody would like to speak on this application?
Nope, no comments, just listening in.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Wait a minute.
Nope.
Don't be so quick. No. So the, I'm in favor of what he's dealing with. The they came before us and they got a variance because they were within the setbacks of the front street. So this is more of just a formality for them to go through. Because it's in our tables that if you're in an industrial commercial zone to do retail sales, you need to get a special permit. The site that he's on, that he's temporarily using or whatever he's going to do with it, actually is much easier to get in and out of with a truck, with traffic and stuff like that than onto East Main Street. That's a little challenging out there at times. Just one thing that I just want to comment on. Jimmy's comment about this. Just a difference of opinions with the building inspector, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. What it is, is the use, if it doesn't, if there's a two-year window or a three-year window, and one or two, I think it's two years. A two-year window lapse in that operation, that's when you lose the use. You don't, you don't have to do it every single day, but if you don't do it for a number of years.
And that's what I thought it was too.
That's what it is.
That made sense to me, actually.
Yeah, and that's all of it, but I just wanted to point that.
I'm going to ask for my money back.
Maybe you can get, maybe you can get.
Good luck. I was going to try to get something free from Henry while he was here, but he wouldn't.
Good luck with that.
She had all these to deal with.
Go ahead, Ken.
And what I actually said it wasn't whether it was continued use, that wasn't what I was asking. It was never permitted for whether you guys were doing that there before, prior. The property never came before the war.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So that was the only reason. I didn't have anything, had I had a variance in the records or something like that.
Oh, no, no, I know, yeah, no, I get it. But that was like 93 or 94 that we started in there.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, if you want to let Johnny boy go.
All right, make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by. Seconded.
By Jim.
Mr. Palmer. Gee, this was last month and I forgot all about you.
Sorry.
To close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Patrick Guy, Bombara, aye.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for 118 Davis Street.
As presented?
As presented, and actually the documents that I have here, John Palmer, that would be added to.
The decision?
Decision, okay.
Okay.
Anyway, and Davis number was 2023-05.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Aye, Jim Palmer.
Aye, Ron Forget.
It's Patrick Guy. Bombara, aye.
So we request for special permits approved, we'll get it drafted and get it to you as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Thanks a bunch.
Thanks for your patience, guys.
Thank you. You guys are quick.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I just talked to him.
You guys took the longest time.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Have a good night, Ken.
You too, good night.
You too.
Back here again.
So that was all of our cases. We approved the minutes for February 1st, and then we have a discussion about North Brown LLC, and we also have a correspondence from a resident up there, which I think we all got a copy of.
Yeah.
So.
Somewhere.
And I know at the last meeting, Mr. Fitzpatrick suggested we write a letter to developer there, and I was in the process of that, and I talked to the building commissioner, and he was able to reach the applicant, and the applicant said he would get something to us, which apparently he did receive that from you.
So I spoke with the applicant, I told him we need the as-built drawings, we need to get them to the water department, we needed for the records for what the zoning board. I received preliminaries, which at least they were coming on at that point for phase one, phase two.
Okay.
Although I haven't noticed.
All right, so those are preliminaries.
Yes.
Okay.
They're staff preliminaries, but they're, you know, they're not finalized. I do have a question for the board, I don't know what their feeling is on it. The roadway going through that development, is that considered a public roadway or a private way? Because I noticed that, I just briefly looked at these, I haven't had a chance to really look in depth, but I did see where some of the underground utilities seem to be going off the edge of the pavement. If it's going into private property, if that's the case, I know there's setbacks, but I don't know what the property lines are or are not. Here's an example. This is example one of the waistline, and it comes in under this area. So I don't know what was determined to be, is this private property? Because they are buying these, or is this common property, or?
It's a condo association, so it's all common ownership land.
Even their watch, they only buy the unit itself?
I believe so, because they're paying into a homeowners association that would cover all the land and the general conditions of that.
Because I could just see this running into a problem at the end of the project, if that's.
We ran into a problem with that in phase one and phase two, that the, well, you actually, you were involved in a that the setback from the edge of the pavement, that they wanted to cut the pavement. So they got determined that the the only way you can figure out where the setback is, is off the center line that was proposed in the original plan, not the pavement. Pavement doesn't dictate where the road is, so they could be off very well where they're not supposed to be.
Well, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, that, like I said, I haven't had a chance to really go through and do a full review on it to make a point about it, but that's one of the things that I saw.
You know, they took everything, all of this is common land for the condo association.
Because I get to see down the road if they got to go in somebody's front yard and dig up because they got a leak.
Dan, the original question, those are, over the private roads, they have to get accepted by the planning board in order to become public roads, and I don't think they're going to accept those.
Well, I don't think they can ever become a public road.
Right, but I don't think they would anyways, because it doesn't meet any of my criteria.
But it'll always remain
Yeah.
The roadway be property of the association.
And they'll be doing all the filing.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to look at this?
No, I've seen that before, but I know the questions I asked with regards to it.
Mr. Quick, it was done today.
It's an as-built, it's an as-built on the.
I'm sorry.
I would like to look at it. I don't know, but the final one, I don't know if it's a, their first rock draft.
That's one of three, there are more here that are different.
Nobody's showing you.
I will put them in the file.
Available if we.
Oh, okay. Want to come down and look at them.
Okay.
So it doesn't necessarily stay in payment? Surprise, surprise.
With regards to the correspondence.
Oh, it goes in properly. I see.
This gentleman is on the board of trustees for the HOA, and he's brought to me concerns about the fact that some of the discharge areas are not completed, you know, bottoms are not permeating like this opposed to he's worried about driveways being completed, sidewalks, roadway, and what or whatnot will end up not completed, that the HOA would be, end up taking over. I reassure them, as far as I can reassure them, that as the building commissioner, I'm not signing off on the project until it's 100% complete. It's not a fast-moving project. So I could be in a box before it's completed, I don't know. But I, you know, trying to reassure them the best I can. I know they wanted to go in front of the conservation commission with these, I don't know that the conservation commission has anything, because it's not in there. What was the protection area? It's outside the buffer zones. They do have the DEP number, and I believe that DEP number was for the crossing on a main road coming into the development, where they have that stream that comes under into that retention pond on the left-hand side. He lives in the unit that's reaped, if you go into phase one where the sister tank road is, he's the last unit, last building, last unit, just before the sister tank. These were what he had brought in for his list of concerns. What was and wasn't done, you see that. And I told them, we'll come down to the stormwater management portion of it until they can get some stabilization on especially at least the left-hand side and nautical way, which faces phase one and phase two. They're not, they can't be expected to go in and put new bottoms in the retaining areas on the other side, because they're just going to continue to get siltation. side, because they're just gonna continue to get siltation coming down through it. So, they do have to monitor it and make sure that they keep and maintain the best they can. But he's concerned with the bigger catch space and area in back of his unit that falls all the way up and back, all the way up to unit seventy-two. And I said, as soon as they can get stabilization on that nautical way.
But that's been discussed for a long time now. That's been discussed for a long time, because...
But I mean, that's where they're developing now, they're on top of the hill.
Yeah.
So, they are, you know, seeding as best they can, just by the way, there's not much they can do about that. I have been adamant with them about their stockpile of materials, to keep them at a minimum, or get them covered, or do something to stabilize them.
Right.
They had taken most of the material on the left side, and I say the left side, coming into the development, take a right on nautical way, the left side, nautical way, which faces phase one and phase two. They had taken most of the material out of their flat, to try and stabilize, so they're not getting a tremendous wash going down in there. I was up there this morning, they're digging another foundation hole now, so I don't say I'm gonna go to the pile. So, I haven't had a chance to get to them, I've got to make sure that they get their permit for that building, because that's the building number eight. It's either twelve and fourteen, or sixteen and eighteen, unit numbers on that left-hand When I last spoke with them, all the buildings they have, and the foundation that's already in there, all the units are on PMS, except for one, one side of one unit. I said, that's good, when are you gonna complete them?
Yeah.
And they said they're working on it.
That big pile of dirt they had there, they hauled it out?
Yep. The pile that was on the left side of nautical way was gone, yeah.
Where'd it go?
Much projected to that site to do it.
Do they do a earth removal permit?
Not sure. So, I think that falls under the same situation as I had over at Sleepy Hollow, with they called a ancillary to a building permit.
Will the material... I'd like to use this as an individual thing and just find out, I can't do none, Sleepy Hollow's not in front of me.
No.
I would just like that answer as to whether or not it falls under an earth removal permit.
I think you'll find that with the...
If the answer is no, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'd just like the answer.
With our planning and zoning guidance, no, it does not fall under an earth removal permit. The only time it falls under an earth removal permit is if it is in an earth removal site. When they have building permits on the site, they utilize the building permit to remove the earth, saying it's purposeful.
But then you can look at that both ways then, because they are building, they had the material somewhere, and the material was put there, now they're removing it, because this is in section three, correct? And that...
They got piled, it's still there, it's on the... When you first drive in, instead of taking a little straight in front of you, the pile, isn't it? When you first drive in, if you was to go straight up the construction road...
Yeah.
You'll come to material that's still there, those piles are still there. If you drive in, make your left-hand turn to go down Compass Road, then take the right onto nautical way, the center road, the piles on the left side of nautical way are piles that have been generated and are being generated from foundation holes. So, I guess what I'm asking is, where'd the pile come from? Did it come from the foundation holes? So, I guess the next thing I would say then, it was in a hole, but we put a foundation in, as you said, it follows the permit, so that would answer it, but I still would like an answer, yes or no.
Yeah. Like, no, there is no earth removal permit.
It's not a mining operation, it's a building.
No. I understand the idea of moving earth, as we just discussed, is you go in and you should have to take it out and take it up, where he's building homes, the dirt's gotta go somewhere, so it puts it in a pile, now he has another use for it somewhere else. So, no, they do not have the...
Should we...
So, this is just a sample as-built, or they have a complete as-built, or everything they got done?
So, this report.
All right. No, that's like...
Well, I guess that all connect, so this is phase one and two? And they don't, so this is...
This says phase two.
This is, this is...
Two getting a tight block.
Phase one, no, phase two. Partial of phase two roadway as-built, plan and profile. Same with news.
This says phase two stop and wrap with the last.
Partial phase three roadway as-built and plan profile.
Did you ever get a phase one as-built?
I do not have an answer for that. I believe the phase one as-built was done, I would have to research and see.
Just to make sure that...
Yeah. I'd have to research and see if it was done where it is.
Do you want this one back, Ken?
Yeah.
Did Bob Sullivan get it?
I don't give a copy of these, I don't know, whether he got them or not, I don't know, I just got them today.
He's still using that engineer company, I think the guy's name was Doug, young fellow, the engineer that came, comes in, has been monitoring them.
Oh, for the reports?
Yeah.
Do I know him?
No, no, we're using the same one that we've had like in the last...
Yeah, still using the same one.
I wonder if we should ask him to review this and comment to us, so we can address this whole...
Yeah, the only thing that I'm concerned about is the guy's getting into the construction end of things, which is what the building commissioner's job is, for the oversight of it, and like he's getting into four to six inches of loom and things like that. I'm a little hesitant to get too deep into it, address this complaint, but to get too deep into it, because it's gonna sidetrack him, paying attention to this list of the...
Oh, you took my list.
Yeah.
No, this was my one.
No, it's not.
It was.
Correct.
He's getting into water quality tests and things like that, stormwater management.
This is all stuff that he's dealing with already. If he can't answer the question, I guess he could reach out to the developer and get the answers for him, so the community developer could respond back to this applicant, but I just, I'm just cautious that to start jumping through hoops on a lot of the concerns that would come in, because it's getting into what he's overseeing already.
As I...
But they still have questions, so that matter is...
As I tried to explain to this gentleman, it's a project that's in construction phase.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been going on for a long period of time, but it's in construction phase. Everything's only to a binder. I says, at the end of the day, when they come through, I says, once they start phase four, the final loop road, then they have to come through and bond, get a bond on the roadway and sidewalks. Says, the completion of this project is not gonna get signed off unless they've done everything that's required of them to do. So, I understand his concerns with the driveway failing and all that. I expressed to him to reach out to the contractor and see if he can patch it. I will reach out to the contractor and see if I can give him the passing of the driveway. But as far as its completion for driveways and the completion for the retention areas and back of the dwelling and all that, until this stabilization up there on that other side, it's all for naught.
Is one and two a hundred percent done? Is one, phase one and phase two, a hundred percent done?
A hundred percent in what aspect? Because none of it's a hundred percent.
Other than the top coat, all the units sold, the infrastructure's in, the sidewalks in, in phase one and phase two.
Phase one, phase two, all units are sold, all rough grade, all binder coats are down on sidewalks, and roadways and driveways. All rain gardens have been installed, new bottoms have been installed, and several of them in phase one, phase two, that were not draining down quickly or properly. The biggest incompletion to phase one and phase two is the final retention area to the left side that reaches all the way around the back. But ultimately, from nautical way being the one they're working on now, through the entire phase one, phase two to that, all ties it together and goes down to those areas.
The reason why I'm asking you this question is if, have you looked through the agreement that we have in two thousand nine?
I've scanned some of it, not all.
So, take a look at it, if you have time, if not, we can reach out to Jay and have him. I've already asked his question before, his milestones that they need to meet at the fifty percent point, one of them is that homeowners' association, I think gets turned over at that point, and then we need to start looking at that.
That's what this concern was.
And we must be pretty much at the fifty percent complete.
They're getting close, and these guys know they're getting close, and they wanna know what they're gonna inherit.
Right. Which technically they shouldn't inherit anything incomplete.
Right. Their concern is that at that milestone that you're talking about, that it's gonna be incomplete stuff, and how is it gonna be reassured that that's gonna be completed?
Right, and I fully agree with them. I've brought this up before, this isn't the first time that I've brought this up, just to fall one, that this day is coming, that they're gonna reach the fifty percent point, and by their agreement, there's milestones they need to meet, there's things that are gonna not happen, the homeowners' association and all that other stuff, so it would be in your best interest to look at that, or the town's best interest to look at that agreement, to find out what those milestones are, and from a construction standpoint, if they haven't finished the retention pond on the left-hand side, why isn't it complete? Is there a real good reason why they can't finish that? And then they're just gonna have to do it there where their system is, and I know you explained it to me, because I brought it up when I see that complaint come in, that that's always been an area of contention because of the silt run down and all that other, and you explained to me that the person that moved out prior to that, the gentleman moving in, ran over the berm with his moving truck and never fixed it, made long runs, which caused another problem in the rain, so somebody needs to fix it, but we have to make sure that phase one and phase two, other than the binder coat, should be pretty much there at this point.
Well, I could make a suggestion, if the board so desires, I can get a hold of town council, I can have them do a review of the order conditions for that fifty percent homeowner approval takeover, and I mean, they would have to, I would assume, I'm not sure, that they would have to come in front of the board at that point before it was turned over to the HOA on fifty percent.
I think we need to reach out to Jay to find out...
I agree.
What needs to be done at this point, because they're reaching out there, and I'm not trying to hogtie the developer, but make sure that the things that are in that agreement are adhered to and we're moving forward.
I mean, I would agree, as long as we get them addressed and some kind of documentation to them for these people, so they don't get stuck with it.
Well, it's only gonna help the developer by addressing, that's why I think it was three or four months ago that I brought this up, and we just kind of slipped a crack probably, but he just, this little letter from the gentleman that is living there, just brings it back up, this is something that we've looked into in the past, so we just have to do our due diligence to get it addressed and make sure that all the things are done the way we need to be done.
Yeah, I think a legal opinion would be good, we don't want those people to inherit something that's eighty percent down or ninety percent down, or anything short of a hundred percent.
Right.
You know, and I think most of the time when it gets turned over to the association, at least what they're taking over is complete, but...
Well, I might suggest that I keep official to the board to have Jay come in. I would want him to review it before he comes in, because he's just gonna come in, we're gonna talk about it, and we're gonna have...
Right.
He needs to come in to advise us as to what needs to be done at this point.
I can get documentation, copies of documentation sent out.
That'd be good.
For him to review. I mean, I would look to him to give him some kind of guidance as far as his thoughts.
Well, that's what we're looking for as a board, guidance.
But I agree, I don't think he should just come in here and we'll discuss it. He should come in and say, these are what are concerns, we have to make sure that this is done before it gets turned over, that's done before it gets turned over.
I mean, the simple things is, too, is say, for instance, phase one, it was to save twenty houses. He's got twenty houses built, but only nineteen sold. Does that constitute a, it not being finished as a sold building? You know what I'm saying? Just the little things like that could be in that two thousand nine document, but it's that many years ago, so...
But I'll assure you, phase one, whether they're selling houses again, phase one and phase two were completely sold out, with the exception of one, and that's here, model one.
Yeah, they've transferred title.
Transfer title, owners are living in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Purchased and sold as a sold boat.
Yeah, although nautical way, basically with the exception of one, is on PMS.
Right, so until it's transferred, it's not sold.
Right.
We've been through that multiple times.
That's what I mean, there's could be so many loopholes that are inside there that he's gonna be using.
To me, to read the documentation that came with this project and try and decipher what's there, I prefer going to town council.
No, true, I agree.
I agree.
Soon you can get in touch with...
It's actually not that bad.
With Jay, you can get the documents to him.
Yeah. Not that bad, but I agree, Jay should be the one, he's very experienced in these type of projects, and I would be looking for his opinions.
So, if the board wishes, I will get the, I'll make contact with them, unless the board wants to make contact with them, and give them the information out there along with the...
We would appreciate if you did that.
Email and request any review this, coming up on that fifty percent quota line for potential agency when he's taking it over, like, what is his feeling about this thing?
No, I've heard, where are we with that? It must be mighty close, if they got two out of four phases done, they must be...
Well, they're at that point.
They're, yeah, I believe they're within buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, could you get a copy of that to Bob Sullivan, make sure that he...
I'll make sure he gets copies of all three, if he doesn't have.
And that had all your information you're looking for, your buildings that backed and everything? Or is that only have infrastructure?
I don't have numbers on everything, so...
Is it something that you, you should have that, you've requested in the past?
Right.
So, could you reach out to them and get your as-built on your structures, and that comes off the center line of the proposed, not the edge of pavement of what's there?
Yeah, because all these center of the road lines for the driveway...
Setback from the center of the road.
That was a painful conversation that we had, that's why I remember it so well. We were on round and round and round and round, and then it finally said, how do you build these if you don't have any control points?
Right.
Well, everything comes off center of the road, you go.
Were you here when the center of the road was...
No, that was just prior to me, that was, I think it was with one of the first structures being built in phase two, and they had the, what brought it up was the front porch was three feet into that twenty-foot...
In phase one, we allowed them to make the buildings twenty-five...
I mean, five feet deeper.
Five feet deeper, yeah. But then when they got into phase two, it became a problem.
Okay. So, you just cut the road? Mike, you just cut the road?
Cut the road on the corner.
You just cut the road to get what you need.
They tried that trick, come down.
Uh-huh.
Cut their pavement back.
I just cut it back.
You'd be fine, you get your...
No, I think it would be helpful to the board and to the residents as well, just to get this stuff by a note. Well, I've had conversations with the gentleman a couple of times, he's... And I took the plans out and showed him the plans, and, you know, unfortunately, the plans, when they're stamped, that's a great mark, I really, I'm not, I legally cannot give people the plans. So, I told him, gave him the engineer's name and everything on the plans, and said, get a hold of him, see if he can give us some plans. Legally, I can't give him over here, give somebody to look at him. So, I went through the plans and going over the different areas and all that with him, and he came and he got with this one here, like I said, I told him at the counter, I says, that DEP number, I believe, follows because of the cross, on the way you to the development. As far as the wetlands inside, I don't think conservation has anything to do with any wetlands inside, because I don't believe there's any, but he's gonna go in front of conservation, which is fine.
I would think that the homeowners' association has some sort of, the council has gonna come along with that, and before they accept it, they should understand what they're getting.
Absolutely.
I would hope so.
And it looks like that's what the guy's trying to do. Looks like he's trying to get...
Yeah, and there's gotta be some kind of punch list or something at that point anyways.
No, but there's gotta be legal council on there, odd, they don't just, all right, thanks for giving it to us.
Yeah, I know. I know, he said he's been trying to contact and talk to Ed Tanville.
No, their homeowners association should have some sort of.
He is on their homeowners, he is one of the members, if not president, of their homeowners association.
Current.
Current.
But he doesn't live there.
Yes.
So when his transfer is over, Ed will not be on there, so he is the representative at it currently, because it's still in the developer's side. Once it transfers to the resident's side, that's a different ballgame. I would imagine they would have some sort of legal representation.
Yeah.
I would think so.
It would. Be foolish not to.
No, true.
Be foolish for them not to have them.
It's outside my jurisdiction, but as long as we.
Scope of young.
Scope, yeah. Do our due diligence, make sure that we're following through with this.
The guy's got some legitimate concerns, they want to know what they're getting.
Yeah, but it coincides with our concerns that we've had right along, so this is a reminder to bring it back up again, and ask the board to see where we stand for this 50% pile stuff.
So let me ask.
The way to get to 75 is a no.
One question I do have, the roadway bonding, was that on completion of phase three before they start phase?
Before they start phase four.
So if they come in this spring and say, we want to start cutting the road in for phase four, then would that trigger the bonding?
I believe so, the thing is, I want to confirm all that stuff with Jay, who is gonna be the one that's gonna be the.
And Ed preached that here many times over the last few years, we don't have to do anything until we're ready to start phase four.
Yeah, you kind of showed that in our face.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I would not be close from starting phase four and getting a bond, you can get in place for the rest of it, so I'm sure that.
Right, that would be a guarantee to be done.
If they have a good year this year, they're gonna be pretty far along.
See, they're concentrating their efforts on it, he says, they've been selling, again, I'm sorry.
Loaner price is supposed to be stable through the, and it doesn't count on the year.
Talking to Ray Vicki, and he says, yeah, he says, you know, for whatever reason, nothing was loaded, and then they had four people.
I wish it might.
I want to see it done. It's been a project that's going on, this is 25 years?
30 years? No, it started 2009 is when they first started the.
But buying, he buying the land.
Well, I don't know when he bought it, but the agreement with.
About time the permits. And all the documents, building.
And it was stagnant until, what, 16 or 17?
So they just started building 2016, 17, just when they started covering it.
I don't know the exact date, it seems like it was a long further back than that, but it was seven years ago.
Time flies.
Yeah, seems longer than that, but.
All right, make a motion to adjourn there, Cap.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, second by Mr. Bumbar, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I, D'Agini.
Hi, Jim Palmer.
Hi, Ron Foggit.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bumbar, aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 8:34.